Okay, so the recorder is going at seven o'clock. And I will call the planning and zoning meeting to order. The roll call and seating of alternates, I see all regular members and all alternates are present tonight. So we definitely have a forum there, no alternates will be seated. But the alternates are certainly welcome to ask questions of any of the applications as we go through there. The item three addition and changes to the agenda. What I would like to do is put the new business ahead of the old business, so the applicants this evening don't have to sit through us going through sign regulations. I know that's going to be painful enough for each of us, they don't need to sit through that as well. So if there are no objections to that, I will move all of the new business up ahead of the old business. Are there any objections? Okay, hearing none, we'll go on to item four, which is public comment. I don't see anybody here that I think isn't associated with one of the applications. Does anybody have a comment for the commission outside of the applications that you're here for this evening? Hearing none, I will go, I'll move on to the new business. And the first item up is the application for a two lot subdivision at 580 Lake Road.
Mr. Chairman, this is Matt Bruton from BL Companies. You just saw me on video and I've proceeded to lose my internet connection, but you can still hear me via phone. Trying to re, I'm trying to reconnect right now, but my internet has other ideas. I appreciate you putting me ahead of your sign regulations. Any, any chance you could do that while I figure out what's going on here?
If, so if, yeah, while you're working on that, I will jump down to new business, item B.
Appreciate it.
Request for modification of the sand and gravel permit at 497 Route 6. And so Chris Bell, I will turn that topic over to you.
I'm trying to get back to the meeting. Let me figure out how to get back here.
Well, you're here, what do you mean try to get back to the meeting?
I can't find the screen again. I went to see, oh, here we are, sorry.
Okay.
I apologize. I went to see the agenda and I didn't know I was going to be up next.
Yeah.
Yes. Gentlemen and ladies of commissioners, we finally got somebody to start taking the gravel out. We, we lost our guy, actually, he wasn't doing a very good job. We had to throw him off the side, he was taking gravel without paying for it and and he wasn't, he was only removing it when nobody was watching. And anyway, we had the original guy that, that started the work on the gravel pit last, way last year, who got the site ready. And he has a site to bring the gravel to and he's been taking out gravel as it started last week. He's taken out 30 loads, which it took us forever to get the other guy to even take some out. As you remember, most of the meeting letters that we had reports, there were no activity in the gravel pit. But now we have quite a bit and we're going to be moving as fast as we can to get the gravel out. And as part of this removal, we have talked to the adjacent property owner, which at the time of our original application, a couple of years ago, was not all that friendly towards the owner. We couldn't get his approval to extend our operation all the way up to the property line as we would want to make a nice, clean, level site, except obviously for the back. But have a nice and level all the way across, which is really the, the goal of the owner. It's not really to take gravel out and sell it, it's really to get a nice site. And the, the owner, Marshall Martin gladly signed on to let Bill Genovese approach the property line with the, the removal. He said it's, you know, it's good for his side also, it's, will be able to see his site better. And that's why we submitted an application to remove it up to his property line. Apparently, what we understand, and he had, Mr. Martin had a problem with the owner that ran the site, the owner's brother. And now that he's not there anymore, he gets along with William Genovese very well. And he gave him approval last week to go ahead and do that. He signed a letter of his approval that you have with the application. This adds another removal amount of approximately 1,800 yards to the, to the gravel pit operation. And because basically we just started, and I, I talked to Jim Halcy about this. We never intended to go beyond this December date. We thought we'd have plenty of time to get the gravel out. But we had so much trouble with the other person, there was one of them sand and gravel. And of course, they started taking too much out and we ended up in the cease and desist. And everything stopped and actually they, they stopped too. They, they never really came back until they felt like it and took material when, without telling people and accounting for it. But we always thought that we'd have everything taken out plenty of time, but this whole period between June and, until last week, not very much was taken out, except for the sand pile that was sifted out, which was about 600 yards and that was on the plan. If with the chairman's permission, I, I'd like to put the two different plans up so you could see exactly what we're looking at.
Yes, Abby, go ahead and allow Chris Bell to share her screen.
I just gave you permission, I, I can also screen share if you prefer as well.
Okay. Um. Let me get that on here. What happened? Right? That's not right.
I have all your application materials here, if you, if it'd be easier for me to
You have it?
My screen, yep, I can pull up the page that has all your applications.
Do you see the, this was the former application where this, does everybody see it? Does everybody see the plan?
Yeah, I see the listing of all the materials that are on the website.
We want to go to the most recent. The one prior to.
This was the plan in June 21st that we submitted for the extension in the restoration plan. Do, do we have that up on, you see it on my screen?
Yep, this, this one that I'm showing is the most recent one.
This is 621. The most recent one was November, that what we submitted with the application.
Oh, I see, okay.
The one dated November 9th is the, the one we just submitted, this is the former one in June.
Yep, okay, well done.
You got that?
Yep.
Should be, it should be dated 621. 21. Actually, 62119, I'm sorry. But it says restoration plan.
Wait, I'm sorry, so I'm sorry, do you want the 2019 one or the 2021?
It says, it says restoration plan 62119. That's what the PDF says.
This PDF is the 11921.
Yeah, that's the one I just submitted last week.
Okay.
I'll just start with the history first, just to show what we had approved in June.
Okay.
Actually, with the original approval was with the restoration plan on top of it.
Okay. Can you say that date one more time?
Well, it says restoration plan 62119, but I mean, it's, it's on my screen, it's not showing up. No.
I did not see anything like that listed on our website when I was preparing for the meeting.
Yeah, I don't.
It's the one that, that you approved actually in the June meeting, the restoration plan. That's the one I was bringing up. Sorry if that's.
Okay, I, I don't know that 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 ever made it here. Abby, go to the, the second one from the top. Go scroll up to the top of, of this whole thing and.
Well, I saw restoration plans there down here.
You might be lumped in with something else from 621.
Okay, yeah, go look if there's. I don't see it.
And if I put it on my screen, you don't see it either?
Who's, who's talking, is that?
I'm sorry, this is Chris Bell.
Yeah, we'd have to go back to you, Sharon, right now we're looking at Abby's screen.
Yep, so you should be able to screen share, I gave you permission to, to do so.
All right, I've got it up on my screen, can anyone see it?
Yeah.
Share. Is it? Yes?
I cannot see it.
Oh.
Within the Zoom window, you'll want to click on the green, screen share option that will be on the bottom of the screen.
Yeah, I, I clicked that.
Then you, yeah, then you gotta click on the file itself, you probably were that.
Yeah, and well, I gotta take it out and go back to it again. Okay, I clicked on it and I have it. Do you see it?
No.
Hmm. Oh. I guess I can wing it without it.
Well, so Abby, Abby, go back to you sharing the screen. And I'd like to look at the second folder from the top on the gravel spit site details, 3619.
Okay.
And, and if, so everybody.
All right, that'll work.
And so, yeah, over at the right hand, the upper right hand side there, there's a bunch of, yeah, if you can blow that up a little bit, Abby, I'm just looking for those five.
Cross section.
Yeah, cross section, okay, there, that's looking good. So this is what we, we were talking about originally as far as the restoration plan.
Correct. Now, right here is the area that we were leaving because we're approaching the property line. So we slope up to, you know, we, we, this is the 50 foot mark here.
Hey now, which section are you talking about now?
This section, it's not blown up enough for me to see it. I think that's one, station one right here.
Yep.
Okay, this is where we start sloping up because actually it's on a skew a little bit, that's why this is 50 feet. But we, we have to stop at grading 50 feet from the property line. So we can grade before, you know, after 50 feet, but once we hit 50 feet, which is actually over in here, we have to stop grading. And, and his property line is, it's actually in here somewhere. This is, this is where his property line is, so that's why 50 feet back is, is back here, his property lines, I probably should have showed his property line in section, but I didn't because.
Line is where at, zero?
No, no, the property line is at the baseline, which if you go back to the plan, you'll see the baseline is way off from the property line. The baseline is back, is back here. And when we look at I'm sorry, this, this is the, that's the property line. And this plan doesn't show the baseline, which is way over here. That's, that section should have shown at station one that the, the property line is is in from where the baseline is, the baseline is back here. If you had, you could see the other plan, the one at 619 restoration plan, you'd see that. But this is the whole area, this hill that we want to take down. This is the 50 foot line here. And right here is 50 feet from the property line, right, right here, this, this line, 50 feet. This is the grading up to that long.
I'm not following you, Chris.
Oh, I'm sorry. If you had the other plan, you'd be, you could see it. Yeah, this is, this is the top of the hill. This is way above grade by 15, 18 feet above down here. This is at, at around 230 down and down here, you're.
Which, which section are you talking?
Start at zero, Chris, start at zero.
Zero is by the road, okay?
Understand where you are.
You got, no. Zero, we have no, this is station zero. There's no excavation occurring at zero, that's why we.
Go to the next one then.
The next one is one. This is station one. Now we go right through the middle of that big giant mound area. These are contours going down in this direction. And we meet the proposed grade about 294. We go up here, 296, 298, 300, 320. Um. And up in, let's see. Yeah, blow this up, 294, 296, 298, 300, 302, 304. So we're about 10 feet above grade here with the, with this peak up here. This is going uphill. And this is the 50 foot mark right there, 50 feet from the property line.
And that was, that, that was where you were, you couldn't remove it before you.
Correct, we could not touch this area. And the reason why this goes on a radius is because the property line ends here for Mr. Marshall and it goes across here. So we're going 50 feet from his pin there, 50 feet from that pin. You know, we, we have to stay 50 feet away. So this whole area, we, well, right from zero here, station zero, this whole area, we want to take down to elevation 294, 294 and a half, which will be the same as the rest of the entire lot.
Okay, and is, is that going to be level with, because you guys never put 294 out there, so we could tell where it was. But, but where is it going to be in relation to Marshall's?
It'll be slightly above it because he is, he's at, at, this is the 294 contour right here. I'm sorry.
Basement.
92.
Basement right now.
292 is right here, the floodplain, if you had the other section, runs across here, the floodplain is at 295, then it goes further back, it goes down to 294. So almost the entire existing yard, the junkyard is in the floodplain. It only gets out of the floodplain as you start coming up into Marshall's property, way on this end, this is all floodplain because it's down below 295. Okay, this is 292 right here, it says so. 292 ties into the existing contour, that's 292. So we are going to be, the intention is for the entire property that we're working on is to be above the floodplain. We don't want to be in the floodplain when we're taking the material out. Right now, he's in the neighborhood of 295 back here, which is good, it's above the floodplain. We said we were never going down below 294 and a half. That's where the absolute bottom of where we're excavating and we're above that. We're at 295 around here, could be 295 and a half, you know, plus or minus, it's a little, it's not a dead fall.
Chris, just, did I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Where is Marshall Martin's pavement, what, at what elevation?
He is at the property line and he's at 292. Okay, he's three feet below the floodplain in his property, at the property line. I don't, I don't have elevations out here, but I have a couple near the street.
All your property is going to be at least two feet above his.
And yes, that's correct. Probably, probably more. It's a better chance for it to be more than, it's not going to be less, that's for sure. But it's our intention to be at least level with what's back here, which is 295, will be at least 295, we could be higher. Because the intention is when he runs out of time, whatever material is on site is just going to get leveled off for whatever's left. And he's not, he's not going to ask for anything more. We're asking for the extension because we just got started. And as aggressive as they are, they've only gotten about 10 feet into the bank. They're trying to take, you know, a lot of yards out per day. But it would be good if we could get a 90 day extension to not only get the rest of the material out, but also this. And in 90 days, he should be able to be well enough done because they have a pretty active project that they're taking material out every day.
Okay, so this would be an additional 90 days beyond the end of this year, so that would take you to the end of March.
I believe that would be correct, yeah. I, I, well, the, the six months we got, I believe was right to approximately the planning and zoning date in December. I believe that was like the 17th or something like that. I don't, not sure the exact date. I, I think you approved it in June, June 17th, so I would just assumed it was December 17th.
Okay, no, understand, and.
And that, that's it, that, obviously, the, the fill is going to include, as we get near the end, you know, the detention basin will be filled as we discussed in the June meeting. And the site will be 100% restored. We're, we're monitoring it on a weekly basis of how much is getting disturbed, so we make sure we don't run into that problem again of having too much disturbed without placing topsoil and seed. And at this point, when he runs over, and when, when he, he gets to the point where he's like a, you know, a phase and a half, we'll topsoil. I don't know if we'll seed or not because the seed's not going to cup in the winter, but we'll definitely have it hay, protect it from erosion. And it'll, it'll be covered up as we go. Because right now we have, well, if you can, want to put up the, the plan that I submitted last week, you can probably see that better.
Yeah, the second from the bottom there.
The site, yeah, second from the bottom, right there. And then blow it up over here. And maybe, there we go. Now, again, this is the 50 foot mark, I left it on there so you'd have a reference. And right now, I, I clipped off from the plan that you approved in June, about this much has been taken off as of date. They've gone in about 10 feet, but this will be picking up as time goes. This is a higher elevation here and this is a high elevation. Soon as the higher elevations get knocked out.
Chris, can you tell us where you're talking about when you, and what section at least? When, when you're going, when you're talking about the different elevations, could you tell us what section you're talking about?
Yeah, um. Right here, we're at station about 250, that's where we had stopped during the cease and desist, we were right about here. 275, I'm sorry, 275, this is two, this is three, about 275. We were, we had, if you scroll down a little bit more, please. I mean, I'm sorry, scroll it up, got my directions wrong, sorry. Get up towards this way more. Yeah, this was the sand pile. There was enough room for a, a truck to get through here, you know, and a little bit more space. Right now, the sand pile is gone and this was the former area, they took that little tip off and they're heading towards this direction. So right now, we're, we're just above station 250. And I would think by the time they got to maybe closer to two, we would have to restore it. Because none of this has been restored because they had traffic going around through here. And the commission said that was okay, as long as you were taking this pile out, we didn't want to restore right up to the pile. So now that this pile is gone, it won't be too long before we're going to have to start restoring this whole area as it gets closer to two. We're, we, like I said, we monitor it now every week. And the excavator is reporting to us how far he's going in. So we're, we're looking at it every week. Once, again, once we get down to pretty close to two, we'll have to restore this area. And that is going to include filling in this channel, which is there now. Because once it gets restored, you don't really need the, the channel. Or we could leave it there, I guess, I guess we could talk about that. Because we, we're not planting grass here, I guess it'd be a good idea to leave the channel there. Grass is not going to grow even if we plant it. So we'll leave the channel in probably right until the last. And I think it actually would be best just to leave it there until March and have the, one of the last things to go is the channel. Because we're going to make sure we got grass growing with the channel there.
Okay, so I'd like to stop for just a minute, Chris. And, you know, one of the things that's making it difficult for us to follow your story tonight is, is we're not seeing your cursor. So when you're, you might be moving your cursor around your screen, but we're not seeing it. And so it's, it's very difficult for us to.
We don't understand a thing that you're saying, Chris.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry.
So, but, but let me continue for a minute, but, so I think there's, there's. When I went over to look, you know, we still got this big mound that's in either section one or section two or the combination. At the end of the day, that's all going to be leveled down to 294, 295.
That's correct.
Okay, so I think what I would, the way, the way ahead that I would like to go tonight was for the next meeting, I would like to have a very, you know, this, this is a very busy drawing that we're, we're looking at here. I would like to be able to have just a drawing that you can come in and run us through what the end state is going to be. And I would have said on, you know, December 17th, but now it'll be like March 17th. And in, we can, we can discuss a motion that gives you the extra 30 for the 90 days extension tonight, that would be one issue. The other issue that, that I would like to at least get, you know, get before the commission and before I, I do that I would like to hear discussion from the commission. Right now, our plan has limited the ability to excavate within 50 feet of the property line. That's because that's what our regulations say. There won't be any excavation within 50 feet of the property line. I went over and looked at this area today. And, and I I think that it would benefit the town to have that ugly mound leveled. to have that ugly mound leveled off as part of the restoration process. And not have that ugly hill between the two, two lots over there. I'm, I'm looking for some feedback from the commission on, do they agree with that thought? Or does anybody disagree with that thought in, in thinks we should retain that fifty? The, the elevated hills within fifty feet of the property line there.
I believe the same thing that you're saying, it's going to look a lot nicer all leveled off.
Okay, any, any other thoughts from any of the other commission members?
I think it's a good idea as, as long as the adjacent property owners are okay with that.
And, and they are, we do have a letter, you know, in our file there that, that says that they are. Now, I, I want to go back because one of the things that when I initially started looking at this, our regulations say no excavation within fifty feet of the property line. Doesn't see anything about what the other property owners concurrents or anything. So he said, well, that's a problem. Then I went and I said, well, let me go look at what the definition of excavation is. And the definition of excavation, at least when I, you know, looked it up online, talks about to make hollow by removing the inner part, make a hole or cavity in. And, and I know that we used the right section to go through this whole process of, of coming up with the plan for this. But, but the section of our regulation is gravel pit. And we certainly don't have a gravel pit, we got a gravel mound. And I can see where if we were digging a pit, we wouldn't want that pit to be any closer than fifty feet from the property line. But since we're trying to smooth off and restore and make ready for potential sale, I think that's a win for, you know, the adjacent property owner, the existing, the, the property owner of the, uh, the sand gravel pit. And it's a, it's a win for the town, you know, that, uh, that's a good deal all the way around. So why I, you know, I don't want to be doing anything that would be contrary to our regulations because we're sworn to uphold those. I do think that in this particular case, given the latitude that, that the adjacent property owner isn't thinking, he is okay with that. And if we look at what the definition of excavation is, I think that's probably when they wrote our regulations, they intended to be, you know, when you're digging a hole, not removing a mound. One of the ways we could proceed here, because we all, I think, think that's a, a good idea, is to say, Chris, Bill, come to us next month and show us the restoration plan. And it has the restoration plan, making that lot sort of smooth, the smooth, you know. And, and you said that there's going to be a two or three foot discontinuity between the, the convenience store and the edge there, but that's a heck of a lot better than the, the ten or twenty foot little mound of debris that we've got over there now.
Um, Mr. Chairman, can I say something?
Yes.
Okay, hopefully, um, I know everyone's positive about this. Hopefully I don't say something that'll snatch their feet from the jaws of victory. I, I do show the elevation there and the restoration plan, uh, not on this, but on the landscaping shows that we have trees planted along the border also. I mean, those are still going to be there. And I think now that we're going to make it level, I wouldn't want to ask permission from the adjacent landowner if he wants those trees there. Because he may not, before it was the mound there and it wouldn't matter. Uh, because he's going to see the mound. Now the trees are going to grow and probably start blocking his, the view of his station, which he may not like. And I, I didn't think about that until just now. But in other gravel sites that I've been involved with, uh, they normally have fifty from fifty to two hundred feet from the property line. It varies with town. And that is exactly the intention. They, they expect to see a hole in the ground and they don't want the hole in the round to go right up to the property line. And when we've had adjacent property owners that said it was okay to grade my lot too, um, or up to my lot, that property owner, like i- if we had his approval way back when, two years ago, how we would normally handle that is have him sign the application as a co-applicant. And that way, we can go up to his line because he's one of the, the applicants. And there is, there wouldn't be that fifty feet because he's agreeing that as a co-applicant, he's agreeing the grading will go right up to his property line and into if he so desires. And that, those, just a couple of things I wanted to mention. I didn't know how the commission would feel about him becoming a co-applicant or not. So I, I just left it off for now. I thought that might confuse the issue at this point. I didn't, it's probably, I, I don't know what the, what they would think, but.
I, I think it would confuse the issue, at least it would confuse me. I'm happy with the letter you got from the owner over there saying that he's good with, with leveling that little mound.
Yeah.
Would, would your applicant? Is there enough work to keep him busy between now and our December meeting so that we could, you know, come approve a restoration plan that has that leveled off and not have it be a done deal before we get to our next meeting?
Well, that, um, the plan I gave you could be called a restor, I didn't call it the restoration plan. That's what I called it last time in June. But this has everything on it, the soul fence, the elevations and everything else that we're intending to do. And bring it down to elevation two ninety-five, that's, that's on the plan. If you want.
Yeah, I, I did not see anything posted online and didn't see, you know, that restoration plan that we were talking about there. And, and you weren't able to bring it up tonight, so.
Yeah, I don't know why it's not on there.
So I, I, I'm reluctant to take action on the fifty foot plan without presenting to the commission the detailed plan that you've got. Now, my, my question to you is can the property owner, does he have enough work to keep him busy for another month if we grant you a three month?
Oh, yeah. I mean, he's, he's got a lot of work before he gets to that fifty foot line, that's.
That was my thinking.
Yeah, oh, he's got plenty of work, yeah. But he's not going to get anywhere near that property fifty foot buffer by the middle of December. You know, basically another month, he's not going to still be anywhere near.
Okay, so an acceptable way ahead here for tonight is if we were to make a motion to grant a three month extension, you would be happy and then come back next month with the ability to go as through the detailed restoration plan. And, and personally, I don't care whether the trees are in there after we get done with it or not. You know, that should be, you come and, and brief the, the commission at the December meeting on the restoration plan in whether or not you want the trees in there or not. If the commissioners decide we need to have the trees in there, we could tell you, put the trees back in. But, but I don't know that anybody's going to give a hoot once we get to a nice level lot there, whether those trees are in it or not. I just don't want to, uh, discuss the restoration plan when we can't, we don't have the latest and greatest available to us and we can't. We need to have you with your cursor point is true because it was, I could not, uh, you know, keep up with where you were going when you were trying to talk.
I, that plan does show how we want to restore it, but I was afraid to take too much off of that plan. But it sounds like the more I take off, the better you'll understand it, like it's a lot of the old notes.
We, we just, yeah, we want, we want to, I want to see what it's going to look like at the end of the day so that we're happy. And I, and I think there, there's a couple of high elevations at the back by the river. And, and my assumption is those are going to stay there.
We have to.
Yes, okay.
So wetland buffer.
Yep, I, I got it. And, and I just want to, to, to be able to show the, the commission the, uh, the plan and allow us to ask and have you answer after we've had a chance to look at the plan. Because none of us have seen it. And so, uh, you know, uh, we need to have a chance to review it before the next meeting, then we'll talk about that piece.
Right, and, and Chris, also add that channel, whatever the channel is that you're talking about.
Still there, yeah.
Right, make sure that that's on that final.
The, the plan that I had in front of you tonight that is dated eleven nine twenty-one, that's, I didn't call it a restoration plan, but that's like the current site plan. I call it the site plan, but, you know, I took off all the proposed contours that are not going to be there anymore, except right up at the property line. And I'll enhance that more so it'll be more understood. And I'll take a lot of the old notes off that, uh, no longer need to be there. And, uh, I'll submit another plan for next month.
Okay, and so with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion that we grant the applicant the three month extension to, uh, his, uh, sand and gravel operation.
I'll second that.
Okay, any, any discussion on that particular motion?
Yes, this is Leanne.
Yep, go ahead, Leanne.
Hi, um, to be clear, if, if your motion is to grant beginning tonight a three month extension, does that include, because what we're talking about now, as we know, is the fifty foot area, um, and, and Marshall Martin, et cetera. Does the three month extension mean that at the end of three months, that the entire site is going to be remediated along in accordance with all of the conditions that were put on it in the beginning of the application? Not just this fifty foot discussion?
Well, my expectation is that all of the conditions that we put on at the, the start, with the exception of that basin that we decided since then to not fill in and to level within fifty feet of the property line by the extramar over there would, would remain in effect. But the applicant is not going to touch that fifty foot buffer zone for the next month until we have a chance to discuss that in detail at the next meeting. We're just going to allow him to keep operating beyond his current extension, which expires here, uh, in the middle of December.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question and a comment, uh, to that?
Go ahead.
We under, we understand that at the end of the permit, in other words, say if it ended December seventeenth, that is the last day he can do removal. He no longer has a gravel remover permit. And he has from that time on to finish restoring the site, whatever it takes. I, I, that's the way we understood the operation. Because he would have to stop the operation almost, you know, weeks before the end of the permit to have everything completely done. I mean, you know, normally you, you end the permit of removal and then he has from that time on a, a reasonable time to, to finish his restoration, make sure all the plants, you know, we can't plant even if like, say it ended in December, say, say it ended in December, we can't plant until spring. So, you know, we assume the restoration would go on for a time limit because you still have the bomb, uh, for two phases.
Yep, and I understand your comment. And I had, you know, that question was a little fuzzy in my mind when we're actually done. And so, um, it would be nice to have a definitive date by which the entire project is complete and restoration is done. In, uh, so if we need to extend that extension by another month or two, I am happy to do that with the understanding that at the end of the extension, the remediation will be complete. And we don't have that dragging on for.
Correct, I mean, normally, um, there is a time period after the gravel pit operation ends that they have a time to restore and in a reasonable time, not unreasonable, you know, a matter of, it, it usually has to do with the growing season and things like that. So, you know, we would hope that, uh, we would have, you know, some time to, to, to wrap things up. You know, I, I think that's, that's important, you know, we're not trying to say we want to go on a year after, not, he, he wants to get this thing done, believe me.
Oh, I understand, so.
I mean, we, we would love an entertainment saying, okay, after your extension, you've got sixty days to totally restore the site. Or, you know, or thirty days, I mean, you can, you know, you could include that. And I, uh, actually, my, personally, I would like to see that. Because I, that would, you know, force the issue of restoration.
Oh, is the contractor that's removing the material now, the one that's going to do the restoration?
Yeah, that's correct. Uh, he's much more responsible and, um, you know, we, we trust them totally to, to restore the site as needed.
Jim Halsey, do you have any input on whether the best way would be to do a five month extension? Or a condition of approval being that, uh, the remediation is done within sixty days, uh, of the expiration of the permit? That make any difference?
The latter is more reasonable, yes. It, it, there's no reason that the restoration has to be done within the actual permit.
So we could put a condition on it, have to be complete within sixty days following expiration of the permit?
Yeah, I, I do have a couple of issues I just want to touch upon. One is I have had a conversation with the property owner, Catherine Hutchinson, the property owner to the right as you look at it. Uh, I think that'd be the south and she's, she's keeping an eye on the, um, uh, on, on the project. And just wanted you to know that, um, she's, she's very much concerned about anything, you know, how this, how this wraps up. Um, and she's following it. And I just wanted to make sure we have some control, controls in place for this, the two forty-five. Who's, are you monitoring this at this point, Chris?
Two ninety-five, um.
I'm talking about finished grade though.
Yeah, finished grade, well, I know the grade they have out there right now. That is the part that's restored and the part that's still bare is approximately two ninety-five plus, all right? I know it's, I know it's over two ninety-four, I know, because the last times I was checking it, it was, it was just over two ninety-five and I told them, you know, get the top soil on there, which probably added another four or five inches. They haven't gone into, let me back up a second, and all the grade around the sand pile was all two ninety-five. So with the pile gone, I know everything is two ninety-five and they've just started excavating. So we will, you know, we will be monitoring as they go into that, uh, that bluff. And, you know, you could see pretty much by eye if it's, if it's level or if they're, you know, they don't want to go down lower than two ninety-five, so.
I just wanted to verify that the kind of, the site worker, site contractor is, is on board in this whole process.
Oh, yeah, yeah, he actually has.
There's been a disconnect there. The other guy didn't, doesn't happen again.
No, no, that won't, that won't happen.
Thank you.
I have a question about.
I would just wanted to, did Jim, Jim, you have any other questions or are you all done?
I, I was a little confused about the vegetation along the, the property. The vegetation appeared on the, on a map earlier, one of the, I'm talking about between Marshall Martin's property. I was confused as to whose property that's on. Whether that's on Marshall Martin's and it was part of the site work, his site plan for extramar or whether it was proposed as part of the gravel pit.
There, there's nothing proposed on Marshall Martin's property at all. It, it, actually, we're stopping before we get to the property line.
What I was seeing, what I was seeing earlier was that existing craps? The, the other, there was a plan that was posted prior to this that showed vegetation along that property line.
Yeah, that was the one that was the second from the top, Abby.
Okay, so those, those are clearly on your, the owner's property.
Yeah, all, all the grain is on the owner's property, that has not changed. Nothing is going to be done on Marshall Martin's property.
No, I'm talking about, about this vegetation.
They're trees.
Oh, the trees, yeah, they're, they're on the owner's property, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Again, I, I would like to, I would talk to the Marshall Martin to see if he wants those trees there or not, or we can do other landscaping besides trees. He may not want the trees there.
And maybe you could have that conversation with Marshall Martin before the next meeting.
Oh, absolutely, yes, sir, yeah.
Anne, did you have a question?
Yes, I'm, I'm just thinking, this three-month extension we're talking about is going right into the majority of the winter, January, February, where it's very cold and the ground can freeze quite far down. Is that going to impede your ability to move anything?
Now, the, the, you're, you're right, the ground does freeze, but it's only going to freeze if we get, like, a lot of rain, and then an instant freeze after that, this material is, is a type A material, it's very free draining, it doesn't hold on to water at all. I don't know how far down the groundwater table is, because we never went deeper than a, a couple of feet below two ninety-four, two ninety-five, just to see what was there. And the mistake that they made to go down deeper, they were down to two ninety-two, and we made them put it back, we, we did not hit groundwater, but, no, they, operations like this continue right through the winter, there's, there's no freeze. Again, there could be a crust on it if it, if it rains, and then we get an instant freeze, you know, which happens a lot in January, yeah, we could get frozen, but it's, it's not going to be very thick, it's, you know, they'll, they'll just knock it off and continue going, you, you'll never get a deep freeze on this material.
Thank you.
Any other commission members have any other questions?
This is Leanne again, if I can just restate it, just so I'm clear. The motion on the floor is about the three-month extension, so that Mr. Bell can come back with maybe a map that's, I don't know what the word that was used, I don't want to say less clear, because I don't think we want it to be less clear.
More comprehensible.
Yes, that's a good word.
More understandable.
At our December meeting for that, so a three-month extension for this topic of the fifty-foot discussion is a completely separate action from the completion of the project, because I understand Mr. Bell to say, after the work is done on the fifty-foot area, they have other remediation to do, so I just want to be completely clear that these are two separate steps.
Yes, we are author, we're, we're going to vote on authorizing the three-month extension, and the property owner will not go into that fifty-foot section near the, the extra mart property until after we approve him doing so at the next meeting, or, I guess we could not approve it, but I think we all agree that that is better, we just want to agree on what the, with the final product is going to look like before we authorize that.
Okay.
And we want to be more clear on what the entire restored lot looks like. We've, we, we're doing a good job of getting rid of material, now it's time to focus on what the end state is going to look like, and that's what we will discuss at the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, maybe clearer, just say that he can only do the work that's on the approved plan. He has no approvals for anything else.
That's, that's correct, yep.
And that's what he's aware of now.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, I will call for a roll call vote on the three-month extension. Anne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, the motion carries five zero zero. So.
Very much.
You've got your three-month extension, and with the plan that we come next month, we'll, we'll talk about, you know, a time limit for authorization of the remediation after the completion of the gravel and sand removal.
I'd just like to tell the commission, just before your next meeting, I'm getting a hip replacement surgery, so if you call for a field meeting, I'm not going to be there. But, I'll be at the Zoom meeting.
Okay, very good, thank you, Chris.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Okay, Matt, we're going to move back up cue now, we gave you plenty of time to review. I saw that you came back on just to sort of to, to gravel pit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes, I, I apologize, I've been doing this for two years remotely, I never lost my connection five seconds before I was supposed to start. I appreciate the accommodation. So for the record, my name is Matthew Bruton, I'm a professional engineer from BL Companies. I'm located, located at one hundred Constitution Plaza in Hartford, Connecticut. If the commission doesn't mind, I'll share my screen to just give a five-minute overview of the project.
Sounds good, Abby, go ahead and allow him to share his screen.
You should have permission.
Okay. Great, so, so the applicant here is proposing, as mentioned, a two-lot subdivision. The current address is at five eighty Lake Road, so for orientation for everybody, Lake Road, if you follow my cursor, I'll just draw in yellow here, is on the left-hand side of the screen with Route six across the bottom. This is an existing lot that has a, a commercial plumbing business. I'm just going to switch over to Google Street View real quick, so I'm on Route six right now. Lake Ave is in the foreground where my mouse is. This entire parcel, building in the back and grass in the front is the existing lot. It's approximately two point six acres in the industrial zone. In general, everything, it, it looks flat from this angle here, but in general, everything pitches from the existing commercial building down to a low spot in this corner here. Under the, under the proposed application, the applicant is looking to subdivide this into two parcels. One would be in red, which I've kind of highlighted here on the top of the page. This would encompass the existing plumbing business with their building, associated parking utilities, all of those things. And then the second newly created parcel would be circled here in blue, that's approximately one point two acres. There's currently, as you saw, really nothing on this besides an existing business sign, most of it is manicured lawn. There is, there are no wetlands particularly on either of these parcels, but there is an upland review associated with the wetlands that are across the street and adjacent to Cheney Brook, which is over here on the left-hand side of the screen where my hand is hovering now. Prior to coming to your board, we did go to the inland wetlands commission to explain this two-lot subdivision, and we did receive approval from them to move the subdivision application to your board. Since that time, we've also done some soil testing on site with the Eastern Highlands Health District, which is your health, your health department, soils perked out very well, eight minutes per inch. Not, groundwater was quite low, and we didn't run into any bedrock or any, any impermeable layer that would cause this issue. The Health District is currently reviewing our plans, so when we come back to you guys, I hope to have official approval letter in hand. I will show you the next thing, just, just for your education. As you guys know, we're just trying to, at this point, create a two-lot subdivision. I know, or the applicant is aware, that we need to go back to inland wetlands and this board for site plan approval. They want to do that after the subdivision is, is finalized. But in general, just to give you guys an idea of what we're doing, this is the existing site again, Route six on the bottom, Lake Ave on the left-hand side. The goal would be to split, split off this lot to create a second lot for a proposed retail developments in the front. You can see in yellow, I highlighted roughly where that upland review line was, and this building obviously stays untouched towards the rear. So, that's kind of a, a, a quick five-minute high-level overview for you guys. I'm happy to answer any questions, I know I've talked into your zoning enforcement officer, Jim Halcy, quite a bit. He let me know, and I saw it the last meeting, obviously, we're aware of you, a project that you guys have across the street, some of the parking enhancements and picnic areas for the trail that you guys have associated along Cheney Brook. So we've obviously, I'm going to take that into consideration when we finalize design plans for site plan approval. And I know this, obviously, subdivision needs to go to public hearing, but I figured it'd be good for you guys to see, hear from me prior to setting that at public hearing. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll leave it at that, and if you guys have any questions, happy, happy to answer.
Okay, first question would be, when, when you drew the upland review area line, was that one hundred feet or two hundred feet?
I believe what we drew was, let me just double-check real quick. We have it, we have it shown at a hundred feet. But I'm, now that you're saying that, I'm thinking it's two hundred.
Yeah, it, it should be two hundred in that.
Okay.
So.
I have a plan with showing a two-hundred-foot review area.
I read somewhere that it was two hundred.
Okay, I just, yeah, want to make sure that we're all in sync on it being two hundred feet. I don't know that that will have any great, great shakes on what we do, but it would be nice to have the drawing be correct. Any other commission members have any questions or comments at this point?
What's the elevation of that lot?
Mr. Mr. Christianer, the, the lot varies, I'll, I'll just share my screen again, just so I can show you visually. So, let me see here, this plan, so in this corner here is roughly, the highest point here is around two ninety-nine, and when you get to a low spot in this corner, it's two ninety-two. It's about seven-foot drop from here to here. If you look at the street view, kind of imperceptible, but in general, it flows from this corner down to this corner, there's a culvert flare-down section in this area where water from the lot crosses onto the highway.
Are, are you, are you planning on sharing driveway?
No, I'll, I'll bring that up again too, so you can see that, so this is, this is our preliminary plan, has not been submitted to you guys yet, so, but obviously, I know from a curiosity standpoint, you want to see in the future, so what we're proposing to do would be to have a driveway on Route six, which would be controlled by DOT, we'd need an encroachment permit for that one. So we have one here, we also do show a connection to Lake Road here. This is the plumbing driveway that would remain in place, so we are not planning on sharing any driveways with fear butter.
What retail are you proposing?
At the moment, right now, the applicant be at this hearing tonight, he was traveling, he will be at the next meeting. At this time, they do not have a signed tenant for the structure, it's speculative. But I'm, I'm, I'm assuming by the time I come back to you, they will have a, a name and business that they can share, but at this time, they don't have anybody.
Now, is all the parking area that you show on that an impervious surface?
Great question, Mr. Chairman, we do show a mixture, or we plan to show, when we submit for site plan approval, a mix of pervious and impervious parking.
Okay, because I know you were, you said in your letter forty-nine point nine percent coverage, and it looked a lot more than that, just looking at your picture there.
Yeah, yep, great, great point, Mr. Chairman, yeah, so we did do soil testing on the property, there's, there's some good infiltration rates. So that's a benefit and good use for pervious pavement. But also, to your point, we need to make sure we comply with the regulations, and you guys do have a fifty percent impervious coverage rate, and to make sure we comply with that, we've had a blend of, a blend of both.
Any other commission members have comments or questions at this point? I do have a couple for you then, Matt. I know on the picture we're looking at right now, it has zoning information, and you've got the little chart with, you know, all the zoning requirements there. If, if on the plan that we look at, it could, it could show also Lot one and Lot two, just where we're at, so we could, we could see all that concisely on there, that would be helpful.
No problem.
The.
So, so that would be, as required by the, by the regulations, as, as well as what you provide? So there's another column.
I can, I can, I can make two more columns in this chart that show the requirements, and then each of the lots hitting those requirements.
Got it.
I guess, Jim, I jumped over you, we should have given you a chance to speak to the application.
No, it's, it's, Matt covered it very well, he's been at this for quite a while.
Okay, so, one of the questions that I had, and I know, Matt, you had asked for a couple of waivers in the, the letter that you sent over to the inland group, and I was wondering, Jim, shouldn't we expect to see our checklist for site plan approval?
Not at this time, is that seeking site plan approval?
Okay, I thought, I thought, hon, I thought this was labeled a site plan.
No, well, maybe labeled a site plan, but we don't have a site plan application, all he's looking to do is subdivide the property at this time.
Yep, okay.
Mr. Chairman, when I come back for site plan approval, I will definitely make sure I, I have a full, complete package with that checklist for you.
No, I understand, I'm just trying to, when we, we get through, I guess I'm going to use the checklist to go through and make sure that all those things that are applicable to the subdivision, you know, that, that we talk about, and
Sure.
I thought that was a helpful tool, certainly, the things that you would want a waiver from, I wouldn't expect to be needing a waiver, I would expect it to be that you and Jim talk about it, it wouldn't be applicable at this stage, and we just put NA there and go on in, in that sort of thing, but might not be, might not be required till we get to the site plan approval, and I, I just think the checklist is a helpful tool. I like it.
Couldn't agree more, yep.
The you said that you were waiting for a report from the, you know, Thad King? And so, we would expect to have that as required by our subdivision regs before we approve the subdivision?
Absolutely, yep.
And then you were, if I look on the, the application that you submitted for that, I think it talks about the topographic plan, which, if it's not on what you asked for, it's required by our section five point seven of the regs. Meanwhile, the topography looks almost level there, there was a couple of other things about where the septic, septic system could go, and all that stuff that I think, you know, it might be in Thad King's report, but, you know, we need to make sure we cover all that stuff there.
Absolutely, absolutely, yep.
The Jim, are there any issues with the subdivision as far as open space or fee in lieu of open space for the subdivision? And I, it wasn't clear to me, as I was trying to go through the regulations on that particular issue.
I, I believe it's, it's applic, it's applicable at the discretion of the commission. I, I don't believe the regs distinguish between residential and commercial properties.
They don't, and.
But they, all this. The whole open space requirements are all at the discretion of, it's up to ten percent of the value, such, you know, uses language of that nature. Some towns don't impose it on industrial, commercial property. Some towns don't impose it on industrial, commercial property. I can, I can look into that a little further.
Okay, I, well, I, I know, you know, all the subdivisions we've done so far, we've had open space subdivision allocated as part of the subdivision process.
Right.
As opposed to the fee. I don't think that would be the way to go here. So the question I was trying to find my way through is, is there a fee associated with this? And I would always be happy to have a little money go into our open space fund.
And just for the record, the, the fee that's listed on, on the applicant's checklist is, is outdated. Um, and he was made aware of it and, and came kind of promptly kind of checked and.
Okay, yep.
Provided it's.
The the next comment I had, Matt, is I know we, we require some kind of monumentation at the new property line that you're proposing there. And it doesn't show that on the drawing we were looking at tonight.
Sure, that's an easy change to make, Mr. Chairman. And, uh, yeah, obviously if it was approved, we're, we're happy to, uh, install any monumentation that's appropriate.
Okay. On, on the drawing that you were showing us, it shows the billboard sign from Franklin Plumbing on the different lot. Would.
Correct.
Will we be the plan for that sign upon subdivision?
Yeah. So I actually was speaking with Jim about that earlier today. Our interpretation of your current sign regs are, uh, seem to show that that would not be allowed to stay because it would be an off-site premise sign. Uh, so we would have to remove it. Um, Jim did let me know that you guys are in the process of revising sign regulations. So it's possible in the future that something may exist to allow it to stay, but I think at this current time, we'd have to remove that sign.
Yeah. And, and I don't think any of the changes we're looking at would, would change that specific issue. So, um, and then I would suggest that you don't call it a billboard sign. Because billboards aren't allowed in Andover anyhow.
Yeah, that is a, a faux pas, a faux pas by our surveying group. I will change the more appropriate name.
And then I guess the last, uh, and, and probably the subtlest of issues on, on the lot is and if you could put the photo, or not the photo, your, your drawing up again. So I see where on the frontage along Route 6, you've reduced it from that you've reduced it to 65 feet is allowed by our regulations. My question is that you show the front of the building oriented toward Lake Road. At least I think I saw something on there. And I don't know that you have the required frontage on Lake Road. And my thought was that the frontage ought to be on the front. Now certainly you've got lots of frontage on two sides there. But it just seems to me that the front of the building should face the side of the lot that has the required amount of frontage.
You're on mute, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, thanks for, for the question. I can definitely look into that and get back to you. Uh, I know you do have stipulations in your regs to reduce the frontage as it relates to, I believe, the orientation of the building. Uh, but it being a corner lot, we do obviously have, uh, frontage on, on two, two roads and not one. So I can definitely double check regs and, and, and cross Ts and dot Is, make sure I come back with a, a clear chart and, and, and plan showing.
Okay, very good. And, and then, uh, I guess my last comment is that you show the setback off of Lake Road going to the center line, where I think you're showing the setback from the side going to the edge of the pavement. And I don't know which of those is correct right this minute. I just noticed they were different.
Yeah, uh, yeah, that's a great question, Mr. Chairman. And I, I actually looked that one up again myself, just to refresh my memory. Uh, you do have stipulations in your zoning code that say it should be from the center of the road, except for when it's along Route 6, and then it's from the edge of pavement.
That's an asterisk on, on 11th, section 11-2. There's a, where all the dimensional requirements, there's some exceptions listed below it.
Very good. So.
I, I believe that is correct, Mr. Chairman. But I can come back and, and show you that section of code, um, just to, just and confirm with Jim that it's, it's appropriate.
Okay, but that was, that was all the questions that I had for you. And I'll ask again, do any of the other commission members, you know, regular members, alternates have any other questions or comments that they'd like to address at this point? Okay, hearing none, let's talk about the way ahead a little bit. And, and it is, the next step would normally be for us to do a site walk. I don't know that there's a lot of information other than what we saw by, you know, driving by it. It kind of looks like an open lot at this point. Do the commission members, uh, you think we should be doing a site walk? Or are we happy with the information that we've gotten tonight?
I'm pretty satisfied.
I don't think there's much more to see. It's, you know, pretty level lot.
Okay, that was, that was my thought too, but that was the next step that we would do. And, and so with where we are tonight with the information, should we schedule a public hearing for December? Or should we review the information in December and schedule the public hearing for January? And Matt, I'd ask you before we have that discussion, are, how, uh, how time sensitive is, is this stuff for your applicant?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, um, the applicant would, um, obviously prefer to keep the timeline moving, you know, as fast as possible. So they prefer December. Given that you've guys asked for stuff tonight and I'm still waiting for a final sign off from health, I would say if we could do December sensitively with the fact that I can get you stuff in a timely manner, I'd love to hold that date. Um, and obviously if I, if I can't return, you know, everything you needed expeditiously, then I'd obviously, you know, January would be, would be a second, second option.
Okay, um, so I'm, I'm looking, our next meeting is, uh, you know, December 21st. That's a Monday. Uh, do you, would you expect it reasonable to think that we would get all the information to support the public hearing a week ahead of time by, you know, Monday prior to that? So we have a week to review it.
I don't think that's a problem, Mr. Chairman.
I guess, uh, Jim, I'll go back to you because you have to get the notifications out. What's, uh, what's our timeline for notification? Is it two weeks?
Yes, um, it's 10 days to, to neighbors. Uh, if you get it in the paper, it's a little trickier because the way that it falls, but December 21st is, is fine. I mean, I, I can meet that.
Okay, so.
Is, um, is it the 21st? Is it, is it, sorry, is it, um, the second?
Third, third.
Sorry, third, third, third Monday would be the 20th, correct? Not the 21st?
I have a feeling you must be right.
Well.
I just want someone to double check me. I'm looking, I'm just trying to find my calendar here.
20th.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, meeting would be the 20th. I need to get something back to you by the 13th. And then, Jim, we need to notify the week prior, 10 days before.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's signs, sign requirement. I will get that information to you regardless of
Perfect.
what the date is.
Okay, so Jim, if you can, uh, you touch base with Matt, you know, the two weeks ahead of time on about the 6th. Make sure everything looks like it's fallen into place. Uh, we won't post the public hearing if we're, we don't think we're going to be able to have the materials. But it seems like everything we were talking about tonight, we should be able to have by then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, um, with that, I'll make a motion to, uh, to schedule a public hearing for the application at 580 Lake Road for December 20th.
Second that.
Second that in, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. I've called, uh, I don't know what it's called, but we're going to start out if there's anybody opposed. I think it's unanimous consent. Uh, and if anybody's opposed, uh, raise your hand or say, uh, I'm opposed. Okay, hearing none. We will say the motion passed unanimously, 500. And I think that's all we've got for you tonight, Matt. You got any questions for us before we head on, on with our agenda?
No, I'm great. Thank you guys so much for your time tonight. I'll, I'll coordinate with Jim, uh, prior to coming back here. So thank you so much. I appreciate the, uh, the patience with the technology.
Okay, well, we, we've all been there and better you than me.
Couldn't agree. Thanks. Bye.
Thanks, Matt. Yep. Okay, back to our agenda here. The next item up is zone change of property at 329 Route 6. Anybody on the call to, uh, address that topic with the commission?
Chairman, I did not contact the owner of the property, um, to let him know that that it would be on the agenda for discussion. I, I didn't hear back from, uh, Mark Brants until, uh, very recently. And it wasn't.
Nope, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I mean, it's, it's not an application and, um, there was no, I, I'm not sure there was any reason for him to, to be on, but nonetheless, I, I could have, uh, let him know and I didn't.
Okay, so I guess, and I can't remember, uh, with the commission, if we, we spoke to this item at the last meeting or not. Uh, the question came up, you, what is the zoning status of, of this particular lot? There's some, kind of like the BB kennel, there's some correspondence that suggests that it's zone changed to business. There's some other things that suggest that it wasn't, it wasn't really clear. Our attorney, Mark Brants, at this point was suggesting that the most straightforward and best way to proceed is to, uh, you know, have another application for zoning change. But they were, they were still looking into other options there. And so that's, uh, that's what the topic is about. But we won't discuss anymore on that one tonight. We'll, we'll put that off to, uh, the next meeting as well. Okay, that completes new business. I guess I will go down to old business at this point. And the first item is the sign regs. And I will start out by saying, I think most of you here, probably with the exception of Steve, we, we spent some time going over signs and, and sign regs, uh, you know, early this year. And, uh, I kind of gave up in frustration. Attorney Mark Brants offered to take a cut at it that I've been mulling over for the last month or so. And, uh, I'm still not real happy with it. It comes down to, uh, you know, an issue of political signs. Apparently we can put, we have to allow political signs to be as big as any other sign that we have in our regulations. And we can put no restrictions on them as far as how many or how long they're up, you know, all that kind of stuff. And it just doesn't seem right to me that we should be able to put a political sign as big as a sign that we would have in a shopping mall. Or something like that. And so I'm still trying to wrestle with, are there any lines of demarcation there? And, uh, but anyhow, Abby, if you've got me allowed to share my screen is.
There you go. You should be able to know.
Okay. And I'm going to try to go through with the commission because it's, uh, you know, we're, we're not late. I was hoping we would be and it would give me a good excuse to not do this. But we'll start working our way through some of the things that I do think we can talk about. And and get that out of the way. So we get down to the more meaty issues after I've had another opportunity to, uh, to discuss it with Mark Brants and, and maybe we'd have him come to, uh, to the meeting to, uh, to help answer questions and that sort of thing. But if I, if I start from, you know, the top here, on intent, we, I, we just added the comment, while ensuring constitutional right of free speech is protected, I guess we got to get rid, we got two welfares in a row there. That's a, that's a typo and we get rid of that. But that's what we're trying to do is make sure that we, we do not infringe on anybody's constitutional right of free speech. What that really means is that the sign is a sign. We can regulate what the size of the sign is, but we can't regulate what goes on the sign. Um, moving down to sign functions, you know, when, uh, when we were looking at sign functions before, we had a multitude of different kinds of signs. I couldn't tell the difference between several of the signs and and I went out and I would look at a sign and say, well, what bucket does this sign fit in? And I couldn't figure that out either. And so we've combined the sign functions into three different ones for our definitions. And, and the first one's identification. And you can read the, the words there. I'm not going to read them out loud. Uh, but does anybody have any comments on those specific words? I think those words are probably okay. And, and that, uh, covers a bunch of our signs identifying what the business commodity or service is. That's, that's what that one does. And that's one of the three buckets that we're ended up, we're going to end up talking about. The next one is the billboard. We didn't want to prohibit it in the definition. We'll prohibit that later on. But we're, we're saying a billboard would be a sign with a face in excess of 32 square feet. Again, 32 square feet is your basic four by eight sheet of plywood, which I thought there's a lot of signs that go up that are made out of a sheet of plywood and, uh, anything bigger than that's a billboard. And, uh, that's the definition of that. So that's only up there so that we can prohibit it later on. This, the second category is a temporary sign. And again, the words all look good. This is where, you know, we do talk about a political sign being in the temporary sign bucket. And I guess at the end of the day, my thought would be a temporary sign doesn't need a permit. A permanent sign does need a permit. It could be just that easy, but I haven't figured out how to make it that easy in the writing of the regs yet. But that's where I'm trying to go. But, but all these things, you know, tag sale, steak fry at the firehouse, political signs. And a political sign includes those signs that say unmask our kids, Black Lives Matter, all those kinda things that have a political slant to them are the political signs, but we can't really put too much restriction on. And so one of the things I need to come through with Mark Brant is, are you telling me that the sign at the extra mark looks to me to be higher than 10 feet and bigger than 32 feet? And that's what our regulations require and you know, how can that be? Something's, something's not in sync with our regulations at that point. Yeah, I'm trying to figure that out. But we all know what a temporary sign is. That's, that's what you bang onto the tree, you put in the ground and announcing your tag sale, announcing your political, you know, candidates, all that kinda stuff. The bake sale at the school, you name it, that's a temporary sign. We got rid of a bunch more public interest sign. This is what I thought, you know, going through it used, I thought this was anything that was of interest to the public. But these are the signs that the town or the state or the federal government posts. And they, you know, speed limit signs, no passing signs. We've got signs that, you know, at the corner of 316 and school road that, you know, show this, the firehouse, the school, town hall. We've got signs for Hurst Farm that the town has put up. Now, all those kinda things are public interest signs. And that's the third bucket that would be in. And so I think, you know, public interest signs are permanent, identification signs are permanent, and temporary signs are temporary. And it was gonna be just that easy. So anybody have any comments on, on that little bit?
Jed, I, I have a question for you on that. Have other towns used this three bucket approach? Or would this be unique to Andover?
It's unique to Andover. The, I, I have looked at a couple of other towns. And I've not been happy with theirs either. And this, you know, this recent thing about, you know, free speech and signs is no, but I, I haven't seen a good example out there that I was happy with and wanted to use. You know, and if you got, if you get the Hartford Current, there was a, you know, a copy of, well, there was a story, I, I think it was on the front page where the ribbons around trees in some town in the northwest side of the state was the big political to do. And, and somebody for Veterans Day wanted to put yellow ribbons around the trees for honoring the veterans. And the town said, no, because, you know, if, if we allow that, then we'd have to allow all these different colors of ribbons around trees. And, and they weren't going there. So everybody's wrestling with, you know, the political ramifications of this. But I haven't seen anything I like better than what we're trying to do. And, and we're trying to build on the lessons learned from other towns. Because Mark Brant writes a lot of other town regulations and, and so he's trying to go there, but it just hasn't all sunk into me yet. But it's getting a little closer. I just hope that Mark Brant doesn't grow frustrated with me because I tried to, to make this understandable.
And conceptually, I, I like the, the idea of three buckets. It makes it easy to understand. And I think would be fairly easy to enforce as well as you go further on. And I was just wondering about other places having done it. We might become the model for other places.
We could. Yep. Then that'd be okay too, but in, in a, oh, so going back to those temporary signs, you know, I, I would like to have a limit for how long those signs can be up. But if political signs go in there, you know, you kinda, that, that takes all that out the window. And there's gotta be a way to do that. I just haven't figured out what it is yet. So that's what I'm struggling with is how to put limits on these temporary signs that don't infringe on free speech and get us in trouble. And that's at the end of the day where we're at. Next part goes on sign construction definitions and I guess canopy, you know, flat, pre standing, those are all kinda straightforward. I wrestled with mechanical signs and, and so right this minute, you know, it says in Andover, you know, we don't have any mechanical signs. And I'm looking for some feedback from the commission on do we want the little blow up sign that you see at the, you know, the tax, the tax preparer guy has going crazy? Or I see him at car lots and all that stuff. And, and I don't know that I would see it any place other than the gas stations in town. But right this minute, my thinking is, we probably don't need those in Andover. And so I would include that in the definition of mechanical signs here. Say, we're not gonna do the forced air things that have the blow up guy going around. Those are kinda popular. Anybody think we ought to, ought to have those?
I think you should have a provision for it and even, cause at some point it, it will come up, right?
Well, it might. It could. The other thing that, you know, Mark and I were talking about as we were going through this in, and there's a lot of signs that have scrolling letters and that kinda thing. And and my thought was we could have those inside, you know, is what you put on the inside window of your restaurant, the sign. And, and yes, it is. It is a sign. Would we expect somebody to put, you know, I've seen the flashing open signs. Okay, that's pretty good. I don't know that I got heartburn with that. I don't want it out on the road because I think it distracts the drivers. But if you have it back there in the window saying you're open and you wanna get somebody's attention, I may be okay with that. Looking for other thoughts of the commission as well on that.
I think the definition is okay, but I, calling it mechanical as a description, it's, it really covers more than mechanical, right? It doesn't have to be mechanical. It's really, what you're talking about is a dynamic display or an active display. So I think that would be more descriptive for a definition.
So say that again. I was getting ready to take a note in my brain.
Yeah, it's all mechanical. If you read the definition of mechanical, it really doesn't necessarily have to have any moving mechanical parts, right?
Yeah, it can be electronically moving.
Yeah. So I would propose we call it active display or dynamic display, something of that nature.
Yep, I like that. Okay. Very good.
On the, that, you go back to the temporary Jed. There, there's no time limit on that?
Uh, well, we're, we're not down to we'll get there in a few minutes, but there's inconsistencies. I, I don't know how. We'll, we'll get there. We're, we're sneaking in on that, but the basic answer is no, no time limits. At least I think that if you're gonna your attorney branch is very reluctant to put restrictions on here. Anything that says, here are the rules for political signs. Because he says that's a red flag for anybody who wants to go challenge it. Why are you putting restrictions on my signs? But if we include them with other bunch of temporary signs, how can we say you can do all this for a political one, but you can't do it for the others? And so I haven't come through the answer that we, we thought we had some things, but it didn't work out. And, and we'll talk about those in a couple of minutes. The projecting roof. We added something about a sky sign, any sign suspended by means of balloon or other than lighter than air device. I was concerned about, you know, somebody's gonna have a sign dangling from a drone, but I think that's probably cause prohibitive. I could see you putting the little hot air balloon or something to hold something up there. We, we certainly can't restrict somebody from flying a banner behind an airplane over the town if they were going to do that. And so I didn't put anything about the drones in there, but we, we did put in that that, you know, we're gonna have a definition of a sky sign and that's what that is. And then we added one for the window too. And and this is where we could, we could include something about the size of a window sign if we wanted. I think, you know, I'm, I'm kinda open to, I don't like to put a lot of restrictions on people any more than we have to. And, and I'm okay with if it's in the window being, you know, the scrolling marquee kinda thing or, you know, the flashing open and that kinda thing. We'd have to work on some of our definitions to include that. I'm gonna go down to sign lighting right now. Right now, we've got two different kinds of lighting. We've got natural lighting, which is sunlight. And we've got artificial, which is you shine a light on it. And it does talk about, you know, at the, like at a gas station, they have the price of gas being, been lit up and that sort of thing. So that's, that's where we are there. I'm still working on, do we need to expand on that or at all and go from there? Man, that, I'll probably add to that. Nothing for you guys to consider on that tonight. General regulations, I thought the first one deals with how big the sign is measuring it. And I thought this should be pretty easy. If you used a four by eight sheet of plywood to build the sign, it was a 32 square foot sign. But that's not what our regulation said. You know, it talks about logos, characters, you've got an area that's enclosing all these characters and symbols and and Mark was trying to make it a little clearer where you draw a rectangle, triangle or semi circle and around the lettering and go it from there. And his reason for that was we, we know how to calculate all those things fairly easily. And so I agree with, with doing that. I'll, I'll talk to him about why it can't be just the face of the sign. You know, if it's a four by four sheet of plywood, it's 16 square feet. If it's four by eight, it's 32. You go from that to that seems easier and better to me. I don't know what the downside is, but I've gotta, you know, do some more talking to Mark on that.
I, I agree with you Jed, because by this definition, if the characters are all within a four by eight or 32 square foot section, then the rest of the sign could be billboard size, right?
Yeah, and, and that's not what we're looking for. And so I wanna make sure we contain it to that four by eight sheet. So that's that. The, the next one going down is essentially no change, but we certainly haven't been enforcing it. And, and this is where it talks about all signs referred there should be clear of all rights of way. Now I changed that to be street rights of way. Just because what I was really trying to prohibit was all the signs that line up right along the edge of the road. I wanted to get them back away. And I don't know, you when, when I was talking to Mark Brant, we had initially, you know, thought 15 feet. That may be a little excessive, maybe 10 feet is better. I see Mark avoided the issue, didn't put it in here. But my thought is we shouldn't have all these signs right up along the side of the road. They're distracting. They, they hinder the sightlines as you're going around corners and just don't like them. So I was gonna, I made it less restrictive than it used to be by just putting it as a street right of way. And I also left in no closer than 15 feet to the lot line. So, you know, as I walk around, I see signs that are just about on the lot line. No, if you wanna sign out there, it ought to be in the middle of your yard. So everybody knows that's your, your sign, not the neighbor's sign. Maybe the neighbor doesn't want it right up to his property line. So that's really no change, loosened it up a little bit, but but I thought that was I liked it. Okay, the next part, no big deal there. So here's where we put in something mechanical signs, sky signs and billboards are prohibited. It goes back to, I think we need to expound on the mechanical signs or to use Steve's word, the dynamic sign. And, and there's probably some room in there that we do want that. Right now with the update, we were just gonna prohibit them and, and that's pretty much same as it was in the past. We're trying to loosen that up because there are a lot of places that use the electronic signs now. And I think they're very popular and we don't wanna be too extreme on our sign restrictions. I, I like to give people latitude to weekend.
I feel that we should allow at least some of these kind of way to allow some, because people wanna be able to advertise their business or something. And
Yep.
This is quite limiting and I think we need to offer some way that they can do it.
Um, in, in really, you know, having been on the commission for a couple of years now, Scott and Leanne and Susan probably got, you know, the longer experience based on that. The only sign discussion I'm aware of in the time that I've been on, on the, the commission was when the extra mark, they put about 20 of those big feather signs along Route 6. And we, we decided that was excessive. We went over and, and asked them to remove them and they did. Now I see there's a couple of those feather signs out there now. It's not excessive. And, and that's probably a totally different, you know, that's a different what bucket do those go with? Those temporary signs or those identification signs? Not exactly sure, but but I agree with Ann. We do want to allow people to advertise their business, but we don't want it to look like the Las Vegas Strip either. And so trying to come up with something that is, is protecting the interests of the people of Andover, trying to understand what that is as best we can to, you know, what they're looking for. And they like our rural character. I think when you put a bunch of signs up, that's, that distracts from that. But that's why we got a public hearing before we're all done on this to, to get feedback from the public once we take our cut on that. So yes, we will work on that a little more. And I share your sentiment. We don't wanna be, we want to encourage people to come to Andover. We don't wanna be making it so that nobody wants to come here.
But Jed?
Yep.
Isn't that covered um, by the size of their sign restriction? It's not covered in that we don't want people having multiple signs for the same business on the same property, which is along the lines of, you know, I think it was the, the subway or the extra mark. It might've been the subway who put out those feather signs. It, it, it doesn't matter if it was them or extra mark because the property is the same. But um, I think you would think anyway, that some of the concern about having multiple signs, if that's what Ann's worried about, making sure people have at least one sign, that if they have a sign that's a, an adequate size, then they, you know, they probably don't wanna have more than one sign either.
I wasn't going so much on the number of signs. I think we should allow some of what had been called mechanical signs.
I wasn't going so much on the number of signs. I think we should allow some of what had been called mechanical signs. Something maybe that, you know, it says you don't, there are things that scroll or alternate or move or screens or projections. I think some of those things are good. It adds to their sign, even if it's still a certain size, but it will get people's attention more. And that's what signs are for. They're advertising and they're trying to get people to come to their business. And we want people to come to businesses in town. We shouldn't be limiting them so too much.
Ann, if you could find an example of a mechanical sign, I've been out looking and I haven't found one yet because I don't, you know, I just haven't seen it. But if you can find an example that we can talk about.
I'll keep my eye out this month.
And anybody else as well. If you think here's a sign that somebody's got, most places, they don't have the mechanical signs. They got you know, sort of, and we'll talk in a minute when we get into, you know, what kinda signs can like Andover Plaza have and that sort of thing. But I've not seen, I've not seen a lot of heartburn on any of that. It's always been these temporary ones and again, I think the feather signs probably exceeded the ten-foot in height thing. Might have been a square footage thing. I don't even know anymore, but I know I don't want to be having Jim spending a lot of his day tracking down sign stuff.
It would seem like for the mechanical signs, and I read this I read this that Mark submitted, and there's so many little fine lines. There's a lot to keep track of, but it would seem to me that that would get into another area of discussion, which is addressed in here, which has to do with lighting.
Yep.
So I'm sure we're gonna get to that on its own too.
Well, and so we, we we talked about the definitions here, and we're gonna, you know, right this minute, our regs, some signs, you can only have natural illumination. And some signs say that you can have a light shining on them. That's what we've got now. So I've gotta work on creating some flexibility to allow these different signs that you're talking about, because I do think that's where we are now. We're all on electronic displays and and so we gotta be able to do that. So that's what we had so far, Leanne, was that little bit of definition, and we'll get into the actual regs there some more in a minute. As you can see where we, we did the mechanical signs, sky signs, billboards are prohibited. That was just a combination of but this one here, we added the sky signs too. Okay, and we're in general requirements again, so no sign permitted which directly or indirectly creates a traffic hazard or may shine on the adjacent adjoining property. I guess there was some discussion at one point in time. I didn't think it was too bad about the lights on the signs on Andover Plaza, are they a distraction to the drivers or not? I didn't think they bothered me too much. And my eyes are sensitive to as anybody's you know, there's certainly some, if you look over at the plaza, you could see some light shining on the signs. But if you're driving down the road, it wasn't distracting to me after dark. So I guess that was the other comment that I've heard discussed at the meeting was those lights. And that was when we were coming up with our lighting regs, that conversation place.
Yeah. And it's important to have enough illumination so you can see, get into a business up on for Coventry.
You cut out, Ann. I see your lips moving. Don't hear you anymore. Yes. Ann, we did not hear your last comment.
Sorry, I know I have missed the driveway at night because it's not illuminated.
Yep, understand.
It is important.
Well, and that, but that's an issue of parking lot lighting, which is a different thing. That's not necessarily the sign. We've gotta have sufficient lighting in the parking lot so you can see to get in there and get around safely. Here's, this is fifteen point four point six is the paragraph where we tried to put some time limits in here. And this is where I really got wrapped around the axle. So, you know, we were trying to say no temporary signs shall be displayed for a time period longer than thirty days prior to the event and seven days after the event.
Or eighteen months.
Well, and so you know, we know if you're gonna have a tag sale, certainly thirty days prior to the event is plenty of time. Seven days after, it'd be nice to make sure that the sign's taken down. And so I asked, you know, Mark, what are we talking about? How do we jump from thirty days to eighteen months? That's a bit of a leap. He said, well, if you got a piece of property that's for sale, and the for sale sign is a temporary sign, you gotta leave that up until, you know, the property is sold. And I agree with that. I maybe, so, so that's where the eighteen months came from. And that was, that was in our regs before he didn't add that.
Jed, what about the signs that aren't necessarily tied to an event? Like, you know, you mentioned earlier, Black Lives Matter sign or the masking signs. But we're considering them under the definition of temporary signs, but they're not tied to a specific event necessarily.
Correct. And that's where I'm working with Mark now, because thirty days doesn't do it. Eighteen months doesn't do it.
Right.
But it's not a permanent sign. Now, I'd be happy, you know, if you want one of those signs up and you want it to stay up, go get a permit. That would discourage anybody from doing it. But the next thing that's gonna happen is as soon as we make a requirement, somebody's, you know, let's say we say a sign could be up for three months. And the, the head of the Democratic Party and the head of the Republican Party are happy with three months putting up the signs before an election. Used to be thirty days. They didn't like that because, you know, most people had already voted thirty days before the election last time. Needs to be longer. They're happy with that. But but if, if we wanted something more, well, you get into the game of, okay, I've got my sign up for three months. I'll take it down for a day, and then I'll put it back up again.
Exactly.
And yeah, I just, I don't like that. And it would be nice to come up with something that made sense and, and people in general could live with and but I just don't see that happening, you know, with the, with all the funny stuff going on with the, with signs and the vulgarity on some signs and all that stuff. And the free speech thing. All you're gonna do is annoy somebody, and then they're gonna put up a sign that you don't like, just to spite you. And that's what I'm trying to avoid. So this is that whole temporary sign thing is the, the place where I got the most heartburn on there right now.
We don't know of another town that's figured it out?
Well, so the, and I forget the town that Mark Brants said I should look at, because they were pretty good shape. They said you could have two signs for sixty days. So it was two signs for a given number of days per quarter. And, you know, that's got prob, it's problematic with only two signs. You know, you go into the election and people wanna put five signs up. And so this whole, the temporary sign thing, and one, one thought I had is I just don't discuss temporary signs at all. Take them out, because we're not gonna do anything with them. And we certainly, you know, don't pay any attention to how long, the no trespassing signs up. The, you know, there's we buy houses signs. I see them banged on trees, you know, around down, the fact, you know, the one coming down Iredonie Road, it's so faded off, you can't see anything on the sign anymore at all. So this whole thing about temporary signs, I just not happy with yet and but if we can, we can agree on most of the other stuff, and then I'll go back and look at dynamic signs, sign lighting, and try to do something with temporary signs. Even if we don't, you know, if we, if we don't put any restrictions on those at all, except for it can't, temporary sign can't be any bigger than the can't be any smaller than the biggest sign that we allow elsewhere. And again, I got heartburned with that too. Because Andover Plaza should be able to have a bigger sign than your tag sale sign. So that's, that's where I'm at. And I don't have, if anybody's got good words to send me that they think tackles that one, I'd happy to get it, but that's where I, I get stuck. The next part, I'm a little questioning on to the signs requiring review by the commission under section twenty-three of regulations. And, and I didn't see where signs needed commission review as part of a site plan. I'll go back and check some work. But, you know, the sign regs ought to be the sign regs. It ought to be, you apply for a permit and Jim deals with it. I just don't know. Again, that's why I wish we were to run out of time tonight. I didn't have to show, share all the things I don't know yet about going through this. In non-compliant, she'll be construed as zoning violation, you know, and we'll do that. We took out the words that the zoning enforcement officer could run around to get rid of all those signs. Legally, that had just too much risk to it, and he said, we don't wanna go there. So so that's all for general signs everywhere. Not perfect. Then we get into signs permitted in all zones. The first two are about, you know, towns. Well, the directional sign, we got rid of the thing there, but as I go through, you know, it seems to me I can, I can reduce these to one item because they're all public interest signs. And then, you know, maybe we want that to be limited to sixteen square feet instead of thirty-two square feet. I haven't seen any of these town signs bigger than than sixteen square feet, but at some point, somebody's gonna come talk to us about a welcome to Andover sign, might be a little bigger than that. I don't know. But but Mark Brants is trying to push me to reduce the size of the signs, and I think we don't allow for big enough signs in some cases. And right now, thirty-two feet, I think, is, is more than adequate. And, and again, we're gonna allow political sign that big then. I figured the town could do that. Here we got rid of all these confusing words that made me think about public interest signs where things like tag sales and all that. Now we got rid of that. So that's signs permitted in all zones. It really talks about the signs that the town can put up, or the state, or the federal government for them there. Now let's talk about signs permitted in the ARD or Andover Lake District. And we had, this is where right now it says temporary signs for construction. The guy's doing a construction project, building a little housing development. He wants to put up a sign. And so we've allowed him to be thirty-two square feet. Thirty-two is a consistent number we use all over here. We used to, we were talking about each subcontractor could put up a sign and and pretty soon you get a bunch of signs. Mark's recommendation was we limit it to thirty-two square feet. They could put one for the overall project and divvy up the remaining square feet to all the contractors there, but we don't want any signs greater than thirty-two square feet. Light not exceed ten feet from the ground. That's pretty standard as we go through here. Illumination shall be all natural. You know, we don't add the spotlights on it. A permit for the zoning agent is required. So I said, well, why for a temporary sign do we want a permit? And so I'm still working with Mark on that. And then he refers us back to fifteen point four. Identification signs, we limited it to sixteen square feet. That's like, you know, the name of the apartment complex or something, if we were to ever get one of those. Again, smaller than thirty-two, no more than ten feet above the ground. And and if we had more than one sign, we were limiting each sign to sixteen square feet, no more than thirty-two square feet total. Here's where we did temporary signs for real estate. And is, we're going through this with Mark. He was saying, you know, we've probably combined the temporary signs for real estate and construction into one. And that's when I started going through saying maybe it should all be just the one there. All temporary signs, just temporary signs. And we are getting rid of the roadside, wayside fruit market things, because we don't have a lot of those. And it's nine oh six. So I think that's where I've droned on enough about signs for now. Got a little bit of feedback, but you understand why I'm not done with signs yet. And haven't been happy with the product that I can bring to you to say, yep, this is ready to go.
And Jed, one thing I noticed in every section, we've limited it to thirty-two square feet or less, right?
Yep.
So why do we need to have a definition of billboard if we've already limited all the signs to thirty-two square feet or less?
I do know that billboard includes off-site signage. Yep, I don't know.
Every sign we've defined, we've said it's thirty-two square feet or less. So by definition, you can't have anything larger than that. So we really don't need a definition of billboard.
And Steve, I'm gonna let everybody think about that. I'm gonna take a five-minute break, because I've got too much water running through me.
Okay.
I'll be right back. Okay, so I'm back. We lose anybody else there? Everybody else still with us? What I was really doing, Steve, was I was going out to gather my thoughts on why we don't want a billboard.
Okay.
Prohibit billboards. And billboards, certainly not temporary signs, not identification signs. They are advertising for something else, and it didn't fall into any of our buckets. And we just wanted to make sure that nobody got the idea that we should be putting a billboard in Andover Long Route Six.
Yeah, I'm not disputing the fact that we don't want billboards. I just thought that the three buckets we identified were captured everything and because And because they were all limited to four by eight or thirty-two square feet, then. It, you know, by definition, you couldn't put a sign up that was bigger than that. But it sounds like you're saying there are, there are some areas where we haven't defined.
I, I will go back and look at that in, you know, I didn't really. Look at it from the perspective of why does it need to be here? I just recognized we didn't want billboards, and so I. Didn't do any more thinking on it than that. I was thinking on, how do I limit these temporary signs?
Yeah, I'm just thinking it's kind of a belt and suspenders approach. If we limit all signs to thirty-two square feet or less. Then by definition, we've covered it. You can't have a billboard then. But.
I, and that goes back, I've gotta go with Mark Brants on. Does the Planning and Zoning Commission have any, you know, I don't, we never have the authority to ignore regulations. And so, I don't think that. There's anything that we can do that would say, okay, you can have one that's eighty square feet. But. But I'll check with him, because it seems to me, you know, and again, we don't have a lot of commercial businesses. But I think looking at the sign on the extra mark. It looks to me that it's higher than ten feet, and it looks to me that it's bigger than thirty-two square feet. And, and so. In, in, Mark keeps trying to push me to make the sign smaller. There are places where I think maybe they should be a little bit bigger. And, and so I'm still wrestling with trying to come to grips on something that. I'd be happy to take to a public hearing and defend. And not there yet, and, and I'll, I'll go, you'll take another think on the, the billboard sign if that's actually necessary. Or all we're doing is giving somebody the bright idea that they might want to say, well, that's unconstitutional. I want to put up a billboard.
I, I agree with you. If there's cases where we have a business identification sign that is allowed to be larger than thirty-two square feet. Then we would need a definition of a billboard sign, right?
Yep. I guess I will, we got one more block before we get into the business district. And it's, so, up here. These are identification signs for uses on other than single-family dwellings. And so we went through that. Okay. So I asked, you know, Mark, so what are the rules for the temporary signs? On a single-family dwelling? Don't we need something there? And he was saying, well, what kind of sign are you talking about? You know, tag sale sign, that kind of thing? I said, yeah, any of those things that somebody posts out front. And so we added something here, and I don't know if this is right or not yet. Identification signs for single-family dwellings. No more than one flat sign, not to exceed two square feet. And if I could get more of those temporary signs into this, you know. And this is really a temporary sign for single-family dwelling. So, again, it's, it's kind of. This is, this is not your street address number, which we all kind of say. Don't need a sign for to put that out there. And. Anyhow, I, I want to bucket in here for the single-family dwellings, telling somebody what they're, what they can do. Because it would be my hope that if somebody said, oh, I want to put up a sign. What do our regulations say about that? You would be able to find something in the regulations that address the issue that the majority of the people. Would be falling under. Granted, most people would never dream of the fact that there's a regulation saying about putting that sign out in their front yard. So we don't have too many people that would be scrolling through our regs, trying to find out whether they could put their tag sale sign out. But if they did, I'd like our regs to encompass that. And that's what I'm trying to do. And, and maybe it'll go back to, I just want to leave it out, because I don't want to regulate those signs, because it's too hard. And so. I'm, I'm not happy with either answer yet. And, and probably it'll end up being, which answer does the commission like? The least. That is, you know, that offends us the least that, that we'll end up with. But I'm not ready to, to tell you that I've sold on any particular item there. And that, I think, is probably more than enough on signs. If, if nothing else, you understand why it's not. Not easy. And it's really frustrating, because it's not something that anybody's gonna look at anyhow. If they did, I'm not sure we're gonna spend the time regulating. So I just, you know. But we don't want to have unconstitutionality into our regs, which we do right now. So we gotta get rid of that. We'll make them hopefully a little bit better. I, I've given up on perfect. I'm, I'm shooting for good enough, and that's where that will be. So thank you for listening. Got a couple of hints from you to go back and look at, and that's all. That's more than enough on signs. So I will stop sharing. Next item in the old business was Affordable Housing Plan. Phil Warner's out, actually working on it. You know, he's been working with the town, getting. Listing of, you know, all our houses and property transactions and all that stuff. And planning to have him come to the December meeting and just give a little introduction who he is, so y'all know him, and go from there. And that's all I'm gonna say about the Affordable Housing Plan at this point. We actually are working. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. And. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from. The October eighteenth. Planning and zoning meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Any discussion on the minutes? And I had no comments on them. Other than Abby did a good job on trying to get all these names on the various attendees. In there. Hearing no comments. Do a roll call vote. Ian?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The minutes are approved, five zero zero. Next item up's correspondence. Jim, got any of that for us?
No.
Okay, getting on a roll. Administrative reports or enforcement actions?
I'm extremely busy. A lot of activity. Construction-wise. Lot of people doing. Looking into lots, you know, determining whether lots are actually buildable, very time-consuming. We are start, new individual strikes in the building office tomorrow. Lynn Warner, twenty hours a week, and she will be trained by a woman that has, has been there temporarily. Who, who worked for the town twenty years. And retired, came back to help out. As far as the, the property, the flight ordinance, the revised flight ordinance. I am working with a couple of property owners, but I can't. Issue any citations. Until such time as we have a hearing officer. And as far as I know, that hasn't occurred. Trying to monitor that. Center Street Property is one. I did meet with Coast Center Street, the owner of Coast Center. With the intent of closing it up, and he indicated he would demo it. And. I have to get back to him on that. I have not heard from. He's gonna demo it with the intent of building another home on that, but it would address the, the, the blade ordinance issues. Other than that, I, I can't think of anything, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, but just because we don't have a hearing officer. Doesn't mean that, you know, you can. Talk to the people about deficiencies, and hopefully they would. They would want to correct it.
I'm making people aware of, of the ordinance.
Okay, yep.
And, and, and the issue, and the fact that they are in violation of it.
Yes, because we would hope that we would never have to issue a violation, that they would all. Fixed. Okay. Commission discussion and miscellaneous. Anybody got any? Thing at all pertaining to the commission that we should be talking about? Okay, I will make this commitment to the commission that at the next meeting, I will have proposed changes. To support our cannabis. Rigs. And I think that's, you know, a little two-paragraph thing in our rigs now on liquor stores and. We'll, we'll add cannabis to that, and I'll have something for you to take a look at at the next meeting. Just so that we stay ahead of, ahead of the curve on making sure we put whatever restrictions we want in there. And that's it. Okay, moving on to public comment. I'm sure after all that talk about the sign, there's nobody but the public left now. Okay? Jim, we tried and failed. I wanted to add the next meeting date to the agenda. And we did add it. It just wasn't right, so.
I, that was only.
Well, we'll do better next time. But I wanted to at least announce the date of the next meeting before we adjourned there. And the only other thing that I wanted to announce before we adjourn is, we've all got Thanksgiving coming up. And so I wish each of you and your families a very happy Thanksgiving and. Hope you have a great holiday with those that you want to share that with.
Thank you.
You too, Jed.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Having, having done that, important task, we'll move on to adjournment. I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second, Leanne.
Okay, thank you, Leanne, and. Anybody opposed? Raise your hand. By unanimous consent, the motion passes five zero zero. Thank you, everybody, for hanging in with the sign thing. Those sign rigs are, are tough ones. I think if we get through that, we got it made. But. Thanks for hanging in. Appreciate, appreciate y'all showing up. Great attendance tonight, and. Keep it up. Thanks. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night, everyone.